Hey, good evening. I'm going to call to order the March 21st, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Height.
Present.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Flague.
Here.
Commissioner Tedzloff.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
All right, great. Next up is Communications from Joni Marsh, Planning and Development Services Director.
Good evening Chairman, good evening Chairman Shernick and Commissioners. I do not have anything to start us off.
Okay. I actually have something which is, we have in the audience, former Commissioner Michael Brunau, and we want to recognize the service that he gave to the Commission. He has moved on to greener pastures. We all had a chance to chat with him before the meeting and really appreciate everything he did while he was here. And yes, it's true, as he was saying, we do think about many of the comments that he said. He brought a lot of thoughtful discussion to the Commission. So if he wouldn't mind coming up, we have a little certificate for him and his former name badge. Oh, sure. Photo opportunity. Okay, everybody. Should I, should we get in front? Okay.
Come on, I want in. All right, let's do it over here.
I'm not in shape to jump over the diet.
That would be a good picture.
Thanks, everybody.
Front page of Congress Call tomorrow.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Public Invited to be Heard section. This is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, we'd love to hear from you. Nobody has signed up, but there are people from the public in the audience. If you'd like to come forward, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Anybody wish to come forward? Okay, there will be another Public Invited to be Heard section at the end of our agenda. So if you're still here, we will open that back up again. I'll close the Public Invited to be Heard. Next is Approval of the Meeting Minutes from February 28th. Any discussion about the meeting minutes? Any motions to approve? Commissioner Pollan?
I move that we approve the February 28, 2018 Meeting Minutes.
Commissioner Height.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Height. Any further discussion about those? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, unanimous passing of the minutes. Next is Item 6 with Planner Libby Tartt Schoenfelder, the Hilton Garden Inn at Harvest Junction North Preliminary Final Plan Development Plan with one variance, PZR 2018-3.
I forgot the red. Good evening Chairman Shernick and members of the Commission. This evening, I am presenting an application, apologies for my frogginess, for the Hilton Garden Inn at Harvest Junction North. It's a preliminary develop and final PUD plan with, and I want to emphasize that the application is with one modification. I know that there was a little bit of variation in your packet about it being a variance, but it's indeed a modification of the PUD. This location is at the northeast corner of Martin Street and the private drive that accesses over to BioLife. The location is 2.25 acres and it's zone PUD commercial with where hotels are permitted use in the Harvest Junction North PUD. It's bordered to the north by the St. Brane Greenway and our stormwater facility and the remainder of it is bordered by the BioLife, the newly, the recently approved Taco Bell and other ancillary retail and restaurant uses in Harvest Junction North. And as stated, this is in envision Longmont. It conforms with a regional center and hotels are designated as an attraction for visitor, as a dwelling for visitors that are coming to the city and the region and is a permissible use under envision Longmont. So as stated, the property is located on 2.25 acres and it's surrounded by other commercial pads. The applicant is proposing a four-story, 18,700 square foot hotel and they are including 79 of their own parking spaces and sharing 17 with the adjacent BioLife facility. The applicant is also proposing for ADA parking spaces as well as six bicycle parking spaces and there is pedestrian accessibility provided from Martin Street into the hotel, from the St. Brane Greenway up to the north and from the private drive to the south. The architectural materials match the Greater Harvest Junction North Shopping Center with cultured stone veneer on the wainscot and drive it on the other three stories and the colors are in shades of white, cream, gray, and green. All of the mechanical units are tucked away behind the parapet on the rooftop and there is lighting that matches the Greater Shopping Center as well. One of the larger issues with the, one of the, pretty much the only issue with the Hilton Garden Inn is the request for the modification of the landscape buffer. This is a parking lot landscape buffer, so it's a minimum of 10 feet that is typically applied from code to shield headlight glare and a variety of other nuisances in a parking lot. The applicant is requesting that the modification is up to three and a half feet in the corners of the development. And I can go back to the slide. So it's kind of, it pinches a little bit on the southwest and southeast corners. And so they are asking for up to three and a half feet of a modification. They are providing a green screen and some additional landscaping materials to mitigate this modification and staff is supportive of this. There were two neighborhood meetings that occurred a little bit ago in September of 2015 and in June of 2016. The notice of application, when the applicant started, was mailed out in April of 2017 and we just recently mailed out our public hearing notice in February 22nd. There was a sign that was blown away and replaced, just to let you know, because of the lovely elements that we're enduring right now. Your decision this evening is to approve the preliminary final PUD with one modification outright as contained in PZR 2018-3A or to approve the preliminary final PUD with modification with one condition in PZR 2018-3B or to deny the application as seen in PZR 3C. Staff is recommending the PZR B and that is with a conditional approval because the application does need to seek out easement vacations in front of City Council and those are necessary, absolutely necessary in order for this PUD to take effect. So that is the end of my presentation and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions, clarifying questions? Commissioner Pollan?
Libby, so what is the difference between the, between it being termed a modification versus it being termed a variance? And what does that mean for us as far as what our approval criteria are for that?
That is a good question. Thank you Commissioner Pollan. A modification has a lesser degree of scrutiny. It is tied in with the PUD itself, whereas a variance has to meet a threshold of more than 20% or a variance in front of you would need to meet the threshold of being a modify, a change of more than 20% to that particular setback.
But is there criteria laid out for the modification? Because I know for variances there's like five different things that a variance has to meet.
Yes.
Is there anything like that for the modification?
And let me, let me find that in my materials.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Shernick, if I may. Commissioner Pollan, I am looking at 150306Oe and I think 17, modification allowed unless otherwise expressly limited by this section, the decision-making body may allow modification of all other applicable zoning district, general development, and subdivision standards within a PUD district, provided that adequate compensating design and mitigation measures are included in the PUD development plan. So to me, that is a criterion for allowing a modification. Adequate compensating design and mitigation measures. Commissioner Height.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I can be heard. Planner Tor Schonfelder, thank you very much for your presentation. I had a question first. My understanding, this project is on the east side of what I will call Harvest Junction writ large, which is split by Martin Street, which has a roundabout in the middle of it. And I can see that there are a lot of pedestrian connections to the walkway and to the new restaurant to the south, but I also at least appreciate that there's an awful lot of commercial activity going on the west side of Harvest Junction. And my question is, how does one negotiate a pedestrian cross of a roundabout? I mean, is that easily accomplished? Is that included into the design criteria for this particular project? Or am I missing, is there something more I should consider?
Typically with the roundabout, Commissioner Height, typically with roundabout design, there is pedestrian accommodation within that roundabout design by Public Works. So that is already supplied in the Greater Harvest Junction North. But there is the, there is also the alternative of going on the Greenway in lieu of, and connecting over to the western edge.
Taking the bridge under Martin Street?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then with connection in relation to the modification request, it was my appreciation that this is a modification of a PUD and I think I read in the materials that possibly the applicant was initially concerned or confused by the extent of the setback because there's, and I don't know what's in the original PUD, is it 10 foot per lot, per parking lot? And I guess I was understanding, and maybe I should direct this to the applicant, maybe I was understanding that they thought that they could use the 10 feet that BioLife was already using and didn't have to come up with their own 10 feet. My question is, is it 10 feet per lot? And if so, why? If you can expound on that.
Between the BioLife parking lot and Hilton?
Yeah, what I was reading in the materials was the applicant understood or at least indicated that it was originally confused that it was 10 foot per lot, ergo 20 feet of setback it needed to account for between itself and BioLife. And that's why they were, maybe I should ask the applicant.
Yes, I will defer that question to the applicant.
Okay. And as Attorney Kramer just identified, there needed to be some design or planning, mitigating circumstances, and I see that there was reference to thicker shrubbery. I couldn't tell though on the plans where that was. What kind of shrubs are we talking about?
Oh, I am going to have to delve into the landscape plan for that particular question.
I'll defer then again to the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further questions at this time? Seeing none, so the applicant is here to present?
Yes.
Excuse me. Thank you Commissioner Shernick and Commissioners for hearing us tonight. My name is Alex Hoimey. I'm with Tate and Associates at 6163 East County Road 16 in Loveland. I am representing for Longmont Harvest Junction Hospitality tonight. They are proposing the Hilton Garden Inn on this property. Architect is Ware Malcolm, landscape architect, sunlit design, and our ecologist that we have used for the riparian setback is Wildland Consultants. Libby did a great job at kind of depicting where the site's located. To our east, there is BioLife. To the south is a Taco Bell restaurant that is going in and recently approved. On the west side of Martin Street is another retail strip. Back in 2016, we were in front of you to propose rezoning to allow the overnight stay in a district that was, in an area of the, of Harvest Junction North that was previously restricted due to the wastewater treatment plant. That was approved and has lifted the restrictions against overnight stays in this, on this lot with the considerations that were taken into account at that time of providing additional ventilation and agreements with the city. So we are a use that is allowed within this area. Excuse me. Sure, thanks. So site improvements that we're proposing, we've gone through many iterations with the town staff to accommodate their interpretation of the code and the needs that need to be provided with any development that comes into Longmont. Pedestrian connectivity has been provided. We have adequate parking for the hotel and we still stay below the city's maximum parking. On the actual lot itself, as Libby mentioned, there's 79 stalls and then we had to enter an agreement with the BioLife across the drive aisle to the east of us for a shared parking agreement and that was needed to meet the requirements of the hotel in moving forward with this development. The drainage intent that was laid out in the original reports and modified reports since has been maintained. With the placement of the building, we are proposing the relocation of a 60-inch storm drain. The current location goes right below the building and so that is being shifted approximately 50 to 100 feet to the west. And there, as Libby mentioned, there's easements that go along with that and we would present those in front of City Council to make sure that is properly vacated and dedicated. And similar with the eight-inch water main that's currently placed out there, it conflicts with the building as well as the relocated storm drain and so that's being realigned as well. Excuse me. As Libby mentioned, we are proposing a modification to the PUD for two areas essentially that encroach into that 10-foot landscape buffer. In the one area, we have the two and a half feet and then in the other, we have four and a half of landscape in those areas. We're providing a green screen similar to the picture shown on the right of this slide here and also dense shrubs are proposed around that area. We did consider several layout iterations in kind of arriving at this being the request that we make for a modification. There are riparian setbacks, there's Greenway setbacks, setbacks from Martin Street, the easements that I mentioned earlier for the storm drain and water, all of which had to be kind of worked with to fit this facility on this two and a quarter acre lot. Here's an exhibit that essentially shows some of the constraints that we had. The existing storm drain line along the north was, you can see where the easement widens there. We connected to that existing easement with the wider easement that was proposed by Public Works and rerouted that around the west of the building. And then the water easement is shown in blue. As you can see, that easement butts the building wall to a point where there's no further movement of taking this property or these improvements to the north. Also, another restriction has been the Greenway setback along the St. Brane Greenway there. We've maintained, or we've maintained the required distance out of, away from the Greenway. Also, we've stayed out of the riparian setback. There's been a couple other applications that have come along where that hasn't been quite possible, but on this, on this plan, we were able to remove all the improvements out of that aside from the trail connection that was required by the town or the city. So on the, on the south end of the project there, you can see this green line. That essentially shows the 10-foot setback or the 10-foot landscape buffer that would be provided along the private drive, which butts, or you know, which has the property line going down the center of that. Here's the one area where we have the, we have to reduce that 10 feet down to two and a half feet and you know, it's a fairly small area there to basically get the parking stalls that the Hilton requires in order to move forward with the development. And then also, we have a four and a half foot separation along the sidewalk as you move further to the east and there's approximately six stalls there that encumber into that buffer area. And as mentioned in the previous slide, we're providing the green screen and shrubbery and shrubs in order to accommodate this modification. As Libby mentioned much on the architecture, we do screen our rooftop materials or our rooftop equipment. The materials match the overall center. The facade length or the, basically the bump outs on the building have been provided to accommodate the city code. And then there's a port cochere along the front of the building that kind of defines the entryway and adds to the overall look of the building. That can be seen on this side elevation. Here's the rear elevation with the entryways there and then the west side elevation. Here's the landscape plan. I guess graphically, it shows the additional shrubs along the intrusion into that buffer as well as the denture shrubs and the green screen as you move further to the east. Does anybody have any, any further questions after my presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Hoimey. Any questions at this time? Commissioner Height?
Thank you. And I'll continue on with the questions that I had from Mr. Tartt Schoenfelder and direct them to you.
Sure.
The setbacks, where did those originate? In the original PUD?
The...
The 10-foot buffer, the landscape buffer for the driveways, I guess.
Right, so there's that 10-foot landscape buffer. That is laid out in the development code and so that's something that is put in place by there, but it's my understanding that with, with the situation that we have with the PUD, it is considered a modification to the, to the PUD.
Okay. And I think I read in your letter of maybe, I think it was March 18th, that there was possibly some initial confusion by the applicant on whether or not you could use, I don't know if it was Taco Bell's or if it was BioLife's.
Right. And there's been some, there's been several iterations that, that letter, the initial understanding from conversations with the city is there was, was an ability to have that 10-foot spread between the two properties. With the conditions that we have, we've, it's been determined that that isn't allowed and therefore we're proposing this modification. And so I don't believe there's any further confusion. We just need the modification along, along the south there. The, the request that would have been made on the west has been accommodated since, since the original application was made.
On the west?
I'm sorry, the east, adjacent to BioLife.
Okay. And then these shrubs that you're putting in, they look like they're, they're pretty tightly woven, but they appear to be deciduous, at least to me. So what happens in the winter?
You are correct. I believe it's a hibiscus. And yes, they would lose their foliage in the winter and there would be a period of time where it would provide lesser of a buffer. It would still have, have a portion of that with the shrub material that would still exist. But yes, the leaves... but yes, the leaves would fall off in the winter season.
Did you look at other types of shrubs? I don't know if there's an evergreen that would work there, but did you look for one?
I would have to defer to our landscape architect on that and unfortunately, he's not here with us tonight.
Okay. And with respect to modifications or improvements to your design, is this the only area where you've added more trees or are there other areas where you've exceeded the city requirements for landscape buffering or for trees or for open space or other mitigating factors?
As far as the additional trees and shrubs throughout the rest of the development, I'm not 100% sure on that. I know we did go through, you know, several iterations with planning to ensure that adequate landscaping has been provided. Several of the easements that run through the property that serve the overall development did make it somewhat difficult to provide all the full requirement of trees and in exchange for that, there was a higher density of landscape material that was provided elsewhere. But as far as having trees in every single island, we did have to make modifications for that that still fall in line with the code.
Okay. I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. I need to, I think your letter also referenced that there are possibilities in encroachment to something called an interim floodplain for Left Hand Creek. What is that?
Right, and there is no encroachment into that. What we were asked to do in regards to the grading and drainage of the property is show the interim floodplain. The city is currently going through a process to reestablish the floodplain limits and in the case of this property, it actually is shifted further away from the property due to some, I believe revised topography that was picked up. It actually pushes it further down the hill to the north and so there's no issue with us impacting that interim floodplain as it exists currently. It's not a final recorded study, but we were asked to look at that and we're out of that with the building and most of the property.
Okay. Did you design the building? I guess I thought, I had read that you designed the building higher to get out of this interim floodplain or is that...
So we designed the building higher basically due to the flood event that happened in 2013. You know, yes, you can go off of floodplain limits that are out there, but the flood event that we had back then, I think far exceeded that and the direction from the developer was to, you know, let's make sure that we don't have any issues with any flood that comes through here. And so we did raise it higher than would have otherwise been required.
Okay. Your letter also referenced, and I don't know, maybe this is a construction thing and from a planning perspective, we might not care, but a fire pump variance, what's that?
Right, so with any fire pump that gets implemented on or that gets placed onto a building, there's a variance that's required and so we go through the, go through Public Works and the fire department to propose that variance and we've, we are processing that currently and with the approval of the PUD, we would be able to kind of finalize that and move forward with.
And is that a construction standard or is that a standard you're asking this commission to sign up for?
No, there's no request for any approval on that. That's something that's approved through Public Works.
Then finally, we're charged with determining whether or not this project overall is compatible with the neighborhood and there's a wastewater treatment plant across the river.
Sure.
Which I know in 2013, or was it 16?
15 or 16.
15, 16. You appeared, the applicant appeared in front of the city or Harvest Junction appeared in front of the city and there's an agreement for the city to be held harmless and/or indemnified with respect to anything that might happen to this property associated or that might generate from the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct.
My question is, huh, how is this used then compatible if the city has to be indemnified for something that might happen on this wastewater treatment plant site? And so my question to you, so my question to the applicant, and this is a lot louder if I talk into the microphone, my question to the applicant is, are you absolutely, absolutely is the wrong modifier. You guys are satisfied, you're convinced that a four-story hotel across a river, a creek from a wastewater treatment plant for a fairly sizable municipality is compatible?
So yes, the process that we went through on that rezoning was fairly extensive. We, the developer, Simran Hospitality and Longmont Hospitality LLC have done a thorough evaluation. It's very apparent to the Hilton where the property is located. They are, they see this as a very desirable location, not necessarily because of the water treatment plant, but because of where it sits in the town and the area that it serves and the shopping center that's adjacent and the additional development that's occurring around it. And so they've gone to great extents to evaluate this and they would not have pushed this project through to this extent if they were not 100% satisfied with the location and the circumstances that are around it. Yep?
Commissioner Flake.
I'm wondering why a wall was not considered since the green screen is four foot high. That would be an all-season type screen.
Sure. Yeah, so the, I can switch back, I don't know if we'll see the detail, but there are utility easements that run along the south end of the property there and to construct a four-foot masonry wall over that would be restrictive to accessing those easements or the utilities within those easements. And so a lesser structure of a green screen is a more acceptable manner to which we can screen this without affecting the existing utilities that are on that south end.
Okay, but then why not at least go to an all-season type green screen?
And I can follow up with my landscape architect on that, but it was determined through many iterations with the staff that this was the way to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. I actually have some questions for you, but Ms. Tarchon Felder, you seem to have an answer about some of the, possibly the vegetation on the green screen. You were, you had turned on your light at one point.
Yes, after looking at the materials that are supplied and some of the pinch points in particular, it's a varietal of different materials, so deciduous shrubs, there's some juniper, there's some grasses and I believe, and I don't want to speak necessarily for the applicant, but depending on how they want to maintain those grasses, that might provide a certain amount of screening as well in some of those tighter areas.
Do you know from what you were looking at earlier, whether the vegetation that would actually grow on the green screen structure itself would be evergreen?
No, I am not knowledgeable about that, so.
Fair enough.
Thanks.
Right, so Mr. Hume, I have a couple questions for you. In your letter to the city, you said that you needed 98 parking spaces, but in our packet, it was also mentioned 96 parking spaces.
Which is it? Right. So in some of the final adjustments that we made to the plan, we did have to take away some of those and we had to go back to Hilton for approval of that. And so that 98, and I'm not sure what that letter is dated, but that 98 is prior to that last iteration where we had to cut two more back in order to be completely out of the greenway buffer.
Okay. And by the way, I do appreciate the fact that you're staying out of the riparian buffer to the north. So it looked like, actually it's on this drawing here, so we have two parking spaces on the west and I count seven on the east that are encroaching, so a total of nine spaces. Had you tried to just add that to the shared parking?
So with the shared parking, how that is working is we are constructing the parking stalls that will be shared with BioLife. I don't know if you recall back to when BioLife went through, but there were issues where, you know, they wanted additional parking and they had some parking phased. What we did in negotiations with the city is propose that they'll be allowed to move into that next phase if we construct it. And so the parking stalls that we're sharing are stalls that the Hilton development is constructing. And so that is the maximum number that we could fit adjacent to the property.
Okay, understood. And let's see, oh, and you also mentioned in your letter that in mid-process, Hilton changed the prototype which you were to use. Could you explain that a little better?
Sure, and I think this may be a dated letter. This is the letter. Yeah, so halfway through the process, we did have a revamp in the site plan which essentially, it revamped the prototype, but then it also allowed us to provide a layout that didn't encroach so much into the greenway buffer, the greenway setback and some other setbacks that we were previously encroaching into. And so essentially, we've taken that on to further improve or eliminate areas where we're not meeting the codes that are laid out by the city.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Tetslov?
Yes. There we go. Looking at the landscape plan, I noticed that along the back of the building, your landscaping is against the building and on the front of the building, it's against the parking lot. So basically, it's varying where the sidewalk is. And I'm wondering if you know, or if you have a specific reason as to why that happened? And I'll, where this is coming from is a lot of times, I've seen as humans, we're lazy people and inevitably, if a sidewalk is not one step away, we will take the shortest path to that sidewalk. And landscaping when against a parking lot instead of five feet over against a building may be harder to keep alive and they may just stop trying and inevitably, that becomes an empty landscape tract. So I'm wondering why it's not against the building all the way around.
Sure, and I can answer the background on that. So the soils in the area are quite expansive and so there was a, there's a push to get the drainage away from the building. We were able to do that on the south, on the north, we, instead of placing that sidewalk directly against the building, we're providing additional inlet strips to basically capture that water before it infiltrates the foundation. And so there has been kind of constraints that have essentially resulted in the layout that we currently have.
And those inlet strips that you put on the north side, couldn't, they didn't work on the south side or...
So on the, basically, the grading requirements and the grading constraints that we had on the north were different than the south and it's essentially what drove the current layout. I don't remember the exact constraints, but I, the project's gone on for quite some time, but I do recall there was a driving force behind that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hume, thank you very much. I need to open up the public hearing part of this portion. We'll be back to you soon, I'm sure. This is a public hearing item. We do have somebody signed up to speak, Mr. Harvey Yocum, if you'd like to come forward and talk. You get five minutes of...
You'll pass.
Oh, you'll pass? Okay. Well, I'll explain it for everybody else. You get five minutes to talk, four minutes of green light, one minute of yellow light and then I cut you off when the light turns red. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak at this time?
If you could say it.
Oh, thanks. Okay, so nobody else is coming forward. Vice Chair Pollan just reminded me, Mr. Yocum, this is your only chance to talk about this particular item, so if you do want to say something, now's the time.
Can you talk to the...
Yes, sir.
My name is Harvey Yocum. I'm at Ten Ken Pratt, Adams Bank and Trust, and we've been supportive of this ever since it came to the drawing board. And we went through the flood four years ago down there and my biggest question had been at the time, would any other buildings down there hold up the water if we had another flood burst? And since the river's been reclaimed and then we saw the FEMA plans early on, it's a desirable place, the way it's being designed down there for this hotel. And it's the closest hotel to the new hospital. So we've got a lot of visitors that's coming to the new hospital that will reside there because it's darn near walking distance, so with the path and trail and everything there. But the hospitality group, we've gotten acquainted with them and we've seen some of their other projects and they're quality people and very much so and we want to support them and we need that hotel and that end of town. So with that said, I'd appreciate it if y'all would vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yocum. Anybody else want to come forward? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go back to discussion amongst the planning and zoning commissioner, Commissioner Pollan.
Okay, I just want to put this out there. So I do very much appreciate that the applicant has worked with the riparian greenway setbacks and not had to have any modification to those. I highly applaud that. With the shared parking, actually, I have gone into the plasma donation a couple times to donate plasma myself. The parking, at times, the parking is tight there and I do believe that the fact that that parking is usually more towards the daytime periods where the parking for the hotel is nighttime, I think that is a good marriage, it's a good use of the land. I do believe that this is applicable to the area. There is no major hotel that I can think of in that area and then given, as Mr. Yocum pointed out with the new hospital there, it does seem very appropriate for the area. I do like the architecture, I will defer to Mr. Schernick, our architect, but from what I've seen, I do appreciate the architecture that they're putting in there. As far as the water treatment plant, we visited this about a year or two ago. I do, I will say, I will defer to the Hilton hotels if they believe that the smell from the, smell from the water treatment plant is not going to affect them and the fact that we do have protection for the city, I am satisfied how that is done. And finally, for the protection, the barrier against the, on the south side, that is going to the private drive. So I'm not too worried about the fact whether or not it's fully covered or partly covered during the fall and winter periods. And plus, when you look on the other side of that, it's probably going to be a Taco Bell and other things, which means for the most part, it's probably going to be more parking lot on the other side. For the fact that they have put in the barrier that they have, I am satisfied with that. So for all those things, I am in favor of this plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollan. I agree with your points on that. Anybody else want to make any comments, have any discussion? Nobody's jumping forward. Any motions? Commissioner Pollan?
I will move that we approve PZR, I think I wrote it down here, PZR 2018-4B.
I will move that we approve PZR, I think I wrote it down here, PZR 2018-4B.
I think it's three. It's 3B.
Is it 3B?
Yeah, I think it's 3B.
3B?
Yep, it's 3B.
Okay, 3B.
Oh, wait. Hang on. Libby, at the top of your packet to us, you do actually list it as PZR 2018-4.
My apologies. Jane has corrected a certain component, but apparently, my report didn't pass that test. So my apologies.
So it is 3B?
It is 3B.
3B, yes.
I will move that we approve 3B with the condition as stated by the city.
Okay. Commissioner Teta?
I think I got it now. I agree with everything Commissioner Paulin said. And I, really, I think the biggest concern that I had coming in was the riparian area, and I'd much prefer that to be kept away from than the landscape buffer. I mean, if you had to pick one or the other, so I think that's a good trade-off. Anyway, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, motion has been seconded by Commissioner Teta. Commissioner Height?
Yeah, I just have more comment, which I did know we're going to go to the motion so quickly, but in any event, my observations are this. I do appreciate that it is a well-designed program, a well-designed project, and it is out of the riparian zone, and they did work hard in the small modification that they need. Doesn't appear to be material. I however am, I however am completely hung up on the fact that it's across the street from a wastewater treatment plant, and I don't believe that it is compatible to have a four-story hotel next to our sewage treatment plant. So I'm, I can't get around that. It's not compatible. It doesn't meet the standard, and I'm not going to be able to support this.
I'll chime in in that regard. I don't want to rehear what we decided back in 2015, but it, I was at that meeting, and it was a long and thorough discussion. If memory serves, and I'm sure Jenny Marsh could correct me, part of the agreement there was that the hotel will be using air filters, an extensive air filtering system. There's, I think they have fixed windows so that the air is always filtered rather than people opening their windows. And also, the water treatment plant has undergone significant changes. We had the head of the treatment plant at that meeting who pointed out that since the original constraint had been put into place, the treatment plant has improved its record of not having problematic air or smells. And so a lot of that went into the decision-making as to why the compatibility was found to be okay. But that's just my memory of that. So Commissioner Tetslov?
For the record, I will second the motion. I don't know if it was seconded. Oh, was it? Okay. All right, I missed it.
Commissioner Paulin?
Yes, and I'll just back up what you said about the meeting from two years ago. The concern from two years ago was about smell. That was the only concern placed by the city about this particular parcel of land with a hotel going there. And that the applicant at that time had indicated what they were going to do to reduce the smell A in their building, and B, we actually also had to ask money from the city in regard to the fact that these water sewage treatment plant had made modifications and that had improved the smell in that area also. So that is why, at that time, we moved forward this plan. And nothing over the last year or two has changed my mind about that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Jane, my vote doesn't seem to be recording. Yeah, I've pressed it three times now. Oh, it is? Okay. Okay. Okay, so that passes five to one. And with Commissioner Height dissenting, this item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the planning and zoning commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period, which begins Thursday, March 22 at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, March 28 at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Hoimey, thank you very much for your presentation. Libby Tartshonfelder, thank you for helping us through the project. And we need to transition to our next agenda item, so let's take a five-minute break while Planner Schumacher sets up. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to start again. So we will get started with our next agenda item, which I need to find out what it is first. It's item number seven, Land Development Code Update Discussion, Zoning Map Conversion with Principal Planner Brian Schumacher and Principal Planner Aaron Fosdick. And Commissioner Teta will be joining us soon. All right.
Good evening, Commissioner Shernick, members of the Planning Commission, Aaron Fosdick and Brian Schumacher with Planning and Development Services. This is sort of our last check-in with you at the, did someone just hear? Oh, thanks, we're excited about it as well. At the last meeting that we had with you, it was brought up that you'd like to see the zoning map again now that we're a little further along. And so that's what we're planning on talking about with you tonight. So we don't have a ton of material, but we're happy to go through specific areas of the map or answer questions. We'll just give kind of a high-level overview. The last time we talked about this was in late November of last year, so it has been a while. And so our process has been really to go, I wouldn't necessarily say parcel by parcel, but small area by small area, and look at what our proposed zoning district is going to be. You may remember that we talked about what the process we would use to rezone the properties associated with the Land Development Code update. And we will be using a legislative process where we rezone all the properties in the city at once rather than asking property owners to come in or do a property-by-property rezoning. You also might recall that we talked about kind of how we're looking at this and what the conversion process is. There's a couple categories, and we have a map and just a few slides that kind of shows this. And there's an attachment in your packet that really, there's some dialogue about this and an attachment that shows each of the zoning districts and kind of what the proposed associated new zoning would be. But during this process, we've identified an opportunity to consolidate several districts. So an easy example is, right now, we have a State 1, a State 2 residential low-density, residential low-density established, and we're able to consolidate those all into single-family residential. So there's a couple instances like that where we're consolidating districts. We're also renaming a number of districts. So for example, the R1 district is becoming residential, single-family. R2 is becoming residential, mixed neighborhood. So there's some renames. The CBD, Central Business District, is becoming mixed-use downtown. We're also mapping a number of new districts. You'll recall, within Invision Longmont, we identified a number of new land uses. Associated with that, we need new zoning districts that will implement those land uses. So probably the best example is we're going from one mixed-use district to five mixed-use districts. Those are going to be new zones that will be new to the map. And then the last thing, one thing that we're really excited about is converting a number of our planned unit developments. We have a lot of planned unit developments right now. And as we took a look at the new base zoning districts that we're planning for, we have identified, a lot, sorry, a lot of those don't really need to be PUDs. So they may have been approved as PUDs because they wanted a smaller side setback or a smaller front setback. And as we evaluated those, we noted that those would now be consistent with whatever that base zoning district was. And so we're proposing that these would be remapped basically to base zoning districts. It is important to note, and you might recall this from when we talked last month about the non-conformities, we will still recognize the final development plan, site-specific development plans for PUDs. So we don't want to create a bunch of non-conforming uses and say, well, you know, your setback is four feet, the base zone has five feet, so you can't expand. So we're, we do have a section in the non-conformities that will deal with this, which enables us to really convert a bunch of our PUDs. There are still a few. Prospect is the best example that will remain a PUD, the Terry Lake mixed-use area. Those are pretty specific. There's specific urban regulations in Prospect that really don't match a base zoning district that will stay a PUD. So there's a few examples of that. Obviously, the proposed zoning districts are based on the Invision Longmont land uses. You're familiar with this map. So this is our existing zoning map. Obviously, you're familiar with this as well. You can see we have a relatively large number of districts down there in the legend. This is the comparison table. You have this in your packet showing the existing zones, what the proposed zone is, and then any comments, so kind of the reasons for the zone change. And then this is the proposed zoning map. It doesn't, I will say, it doesn't have every, everything that the existing zoning map is, so it is less cluttered because it has fewer zones, but it also doesn't have everything. So once we adopt the new code, adopt the new zoning districts, we'll make it official and, you know, add the GID and airport influence zone and everything else. But what I want you to look at here is the zones. And then probably even more informative is this map, which really looks at the reasons for the change. And so you can see, let me, let me actually look at the printed copy because I can't read the legend. I am getting my eyes checked tomorrow, so that'll be good. So for example, the dark purple is a consolidation. So for example, looking at those estate residential zones that are going to be going to residential, single-family. The green is envision alignment. And so along Main Street, we're going from commercial zone to, for example, the mixed-use corridor. It's a new zone. The gray are areas where there's not really a change being proposed. That's primarily public and ag zoning. PUD conversion is all the stuff that's in that orangish color. And then the magenta is really the renamed zone. So a lot of that is R1 that's So, a lot of that is R1 that's going to residential, single-family. So, it's mostly a name change. So, next steps for us, we mentioned this last time, but it's worth mentioning again, is we will be hosting a public meeting for the Land Development Code in early April, April 11th. We're going to have two meetings. We'll send you notice of these. We'll also be getting a revised consolidated draft that looks at all of the sections you've reviewed, kind of month by month. Everything will be put together. It'll include all the comments from the commission, from city council, resident staff, kind of into one overall new final draft that can be reviewed by the community. We're planning on bringing that to you at your meeting on April 25th for your formal recommendation. But we'll send out the consolidated draft to you when we get it in early April, so you have more time than just the traditional week that you have with the agenda. And so, if you need something different, please let Brian and I know, but that's our plan now. Once you make your recommendation on the 25th, we'll be taking this to city council for two readings in May, so May 8th and May 22nd. Ultimately, we're hoping for city council adoption at that second reading on May 22nd. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions. We also have a PDF of the proposed zone, so if there's areas you want us to zoom into, we can definitely do that tonight.
Thank you, Erin. City Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Shernick. I just noticed that there's a couple sections of approved annexations from the city council that have not been noted here. So, I was just wondering if you could fill us in on some of those sections that we've approved at this point.
Absolutely. Great question, Councilmember Rodriguez. There are a number of areas that are relatively large in size that both the commission has seen and council has conditionally approved. They have not been recorded yet. The annexations are conditionally approved. Typically, one of the main things they need to do is satisfy their water. They need to turn over water. And so, you'll see, for example, the South Flatlands, the Irwin Thomas, as well as the HMS, which was most recently approved, that are not showing up on the map. And so, we are talking about what we do with those properties. It will likely be a remapping of the zones that were approved. I think we need to still have some of those conversations. But obviously, council-approved zoning that may change, depending on when those record. And so, we will add those to the zoning map, just as we do with any annexation, once they're recorded.
Erin, I have a couple of questions. Did we happen to create any new enclaves, you know, partly because we've been annexing new land? Did any new enclaves pop up?
Commissioner Shernick, there's no enclaves that were created as a result of our code update. There are enclaves within the city, and that's something that I know Joni has looked at recently and could share information. There's definitely specific state statutes about when an enclave is an enclave. And so, we've identified a number of those within the city, but none of them have been created as a result of this process.
And when we transition a PUD over to just standard zoning, so I assume that their HOA stays intact and nothing happens to the HOA, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, you mentioned a public meeting April 11th, but have you gotten public feedback yet, I mean, through other avenues? And how's that going? And what's the overall thrust of that?
Commissioner Shernick, we have gotten some public feedback. We've advertised on Nextdoor, Facebook, and we have obviously a webpage. Brian and I have been meeting with folks. We've been going out to groups and providing information. We've provided some information, for example, in the utility bill inserts over the course of the project. We've had some feedback from residents and property owners, some specific feedback. For example, you've seen some of the correspondence we've received from the Historic East Side Neighborhood, some of the development community. We've also received a number of emails, which I think we've shared with the commission. Certainly, we can share that in the final packet that we give to you. A lot of the feedback has been pretty specific. So, we've had a couple folks that live in the community that work in other communities. For example, one of our most recent comments was from a landscape architect that does work in other cities and had some pretty good feedback for us. So, we have gotten, I wouldn't say a ton of public input, but we have gotten some pretty constructive feedback from folks. We've also gotten a lot of feedback from staff, which has been really helpful. Folks that use the code day in and day out have provided us a lot of great feedback on things that they feel work well, things that haven't worked well. And so, Brian in particular has spent a lot of time kind of going through reconciling all the comments that we've gotten from you all, from council, from members of the public and staff, and kind of seeing what makes sense to incorporate and change. So, we can definitely provide the comments that we've gotten today, if that would be helpful, to provide those again.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pollan.
Thank you. First of all, Brian and Erin, thank you very much for this, especially the map of the proposed, the reason for the changes. That's very, very helpful. In looking at this, it appears, and please correct me if I'm wrong, really, there's no changes, basically something going from one zoning kind of to another. It's basically the changes are because of just consolidation, aligning, or PUD conversion. But there's really nothing changing from, let's say, high residential to single-family or vice versa. It's just basically conversions and stuff to make it match up.
Commissioner Pollan, there are a few areas that are being changed, and that's as a result of their land use changing. So, those would be identified as, those would be in the green areas. So, that's, it's kind of lumped together. But probably the best example would be like, let me see if I can use this mouse. So, for example, this area here that's west of Mill Village currently is zoned general industrial. But when we went through the envision process, we worked with the neighbors and with that property owner and identified that mixed neighborhood was a more desirable land use. And so, we're recommending that that zoning go from general industrial to residential mixed neighborhood. So, there are, I wouldn't say a ton of examples of that, but there are a few examples of that where the zoning is changing. It's essentially a rezone. But by and large, it is more alignment.
Is there any way you can denote that?
Yeah, we could, it's a little challenging. We could certainly call that out. There's a few other areas, you know, up here, for example, there's some areas that are currently zoned R1 that are being recommended to be rezoned, changed to residential mixed neighborhood as a result of envision. And so, there are a few areas like that, and I can try to pull those out on the map and figure out a way to display that differently.
I think that would be helpful for us and also for the public. Thank you.
Commissioner Hite.
Thank you. I'd also like to applaud you for the efforts in making these revisions. Though, my brain focused on times, I heard 4/25 is the time that you're going to come back to us with a kind of a final read of this. And you'd indicated that possibly you could have this available to us earlier. That would really help me. I had found that the one-week time period to review some of the issues that were being questioned the week before that we had our hearings on these particular issues wasn't enough. So, I would enjoy having a lot of time to look at it one last cooked time. Thank you.
Commissioner Teta.
I wonder, Erin, is there a protocol in place for notifying property owners in the, especially in the instances that we were talking about maybe denoting bigger changes in, like Commissioner Pollan brought up?
Commissioner Teta, we hadn't anticipated doing like a mailing, for example. There's frankly far too many properties. Almost every property in the city is being rezoned, even if it's in name only. Really, the only ones that aren't are public, and we know that because those are mostly our properties. We will, we have provided, we've been trying to provide notice to folks and identify in our correspondence, for example, through social media and print media, that almost every property will be rezoned and there are substantial changes with this update. So, we have tried to notify people that way. We will obviously notice the ordinances and public hearings consistent with how we notice things. But we hadn't anticipated mailing notice to every property owner in the city as a result of the code update.
Just to follow up on that, you mentioned earlier that in the insert with the paper utility bills, that there was mention of a public meeting. I don't get my utility bill by paper anymore. I don't know if there's a way to include like a hyperlink in the email that goes out that tells paperless customers that, you know, that your bill's ready. And maybe we could have a little highlighted part that, "Hey, zoning's changing." Because that probably would have caught my attention if it, but especially if it were like in a colorful box or something. Just an idea. Commissioner Flag.
Sorry, my voice is starting to fade. One of the things that we discussed early on were areas of change and areas of stability. And so, one of the things that I looked at was the areas of stability because we sort of guaranteed to a certain extent that those areas would not substantially change and that people living there would not have to be concerned as much about the zoning changes that could come. So, one of the things that I have noted is that areas of stability were places that are to the west of Lashley, for example, and south of Ninth there. And some places were our single-family dwellings that are now going to be R2 mixed use, single-family mixed use, basically. So, they've changed from an R2, which is lower density, excuse me, higher density, to a single-family, a mixed kind of used neighborhood, basically. So, my concern is areas that are east of Midland, the trend houses west of Lashley, and some of the other areas along that line. Most of these areas seem to be affected are to the east of Main Street. And so, I'm concerned about those areas because, to a certain extent, populations in those areas are working, people that, or they're older retired people, and they sort of have an expectation that where they're living in those, not real elegant housing, but it's adequate for them, in their neighborhoods, a single-family residence. There are some duplexes sprinkled through there as well. And I know we can't do spot zoning, and I know we don't want non-conforming uses. But my concern is that some of these people are not going to understand what's happening until somebody comes in and puts something next to them that they never anticipated living where they are living now. And so, one of the things that we had discussed early when we talked about areas of change and stability was to make sure those people get brought along and that we don't, at the end of the day, have them sitting in a zone district that seems to be incompatible with what they perceive now that their neighborhood is. And that includes any kind of a business situation. So, then I'm back to the concern that I had about the mixed-use neighborhood that we're converting from the R2s, because I realize, yes, they have to come and get an approval to go ahead and do that. But by and large, we generally, it seems to me, we're generally supportive of businesses. And so, then my concern is, what is this pent-up need that I keep asking, and I don't feel like I'm getting a real good answer to it, of why the R2 has to change to allow commercial into it, when we have lots of commercial availability in the city? And it doesn't seem rational to me that we should have to do that. My next question would be, please explain to me on these PUD conversions, I too have a question. If someone comes in and they have bought a couple properties that are adjacent to one another, even if there is presently a PUD overlay of some variety that is going away, and they come in and they have this property that, on the face of it, if they read through the zoning code, meets the criteria. So, what happens then when they come in the door? Are they told then that, "Yes, but you have to go talk to the neighborhood"? Are they told, "Here's the process for getting this approved"? What will the advice obtained for those areas? Because I don't want to have a developer of good conscience come in and they want to put in some kind of a small store or whatever, and they assume that the zone district is appropriate, and they're going to be able to come in and look at the residential mixed neighborhood and say, "Ah, I can put this here, and look, I've got all these people that will come to my business." And then, what will the planning office be telling them? So, that's a huge concern to me.
Commissioner Shernick, Commissioner Flag, I'll take a shot at answering, and then Brian can add to these two, kind of two overall questions that you have. So, one thing I think we should, I guess, maybe clear up, it seems like there may be, we have not communicated well, that this, what is on here as the orange, this residential mixed neighborhood, is just that. It's a residential zone. So, this is not a mixed-use zone. We do have a number of mixed-use zones. Residential mixed is really more implying a mix of housing types. And so, basically, the purpose of this zone is to establish and preserve mixed-density residential neighborhoods to accommodate a variety of housing types, including detached and smaller-scale attached dwellings. This district may also include limited non-residential use that support the neighborhood pursuant to Table 4.1. It's intended to be conveniently located on arterial streets. There's some worse, it can also serve as a transition from single-family neighborhoods to multifamily mixed-use and non-residential. So, we definitely heard concerns from the commission about maybe more, being more permissive with non-residential uses in this area. And so, I think you'll be pleased in the next draft that you see that not only have we made some revisions to the purpose and are calling it out as a mixed neighborhood instead of just mixed, but we've also made changes to the table of allowed uses to really call out that while there may be some appropriate non-residential uses in some areas within some of these zone districts, they're not appropriate everywhere. And so, what we've tried to do to call that out is making these conditional secondary uses. And so, those would have a higher level of scrutiny and a public hearing associated with them. We've also identified some locational criteria that we think make sense in terms of this, these types of non-residential uses in this zone may be appropriate, for example, for properties on an arterial, but they're not going to be appropriate, you know, in mid-block next door to another house. So, we've tried to spell that out a little bit more clearly, both in the purpose and description of the zone, as well as the table of allowed uses. And so, hopefully, you'll be pleased with that, and it'll address some of your concerns. In terms of, so I think that sort of answers the PUD question as well. So, basically, there's a conditional use process associated with these non-residential secondary uses, as well as locational criteria. The other thing to note about properties that are currently part of a PUD that we're proposing to rezone to a base district is that you're exactly right, that covenants still stand. And so, those, in many cases, are stricter even than the development plan that we have today. So, there's a lot of things, for example, that, you know, maybe for, right now, the city permits home occupations, but covenants don't allow that. And so, those things aren't going away. Covenants will still be here. It's just really to provide more ease in administration, more predictability and ease, frankly, for property owners when they're coming in to get a fence permit or figure out, you know, how they can do an addition, things like that. We will still instruct them to check with their HOA, obviously, and...
And I was just going to add regarding PUDs. We have a lot of examples, regardless of whether they're PUD zoning or non-PUD zoning in our community, where there are homeowners' associations in subdivisions to address landscaping and common area maintenance, as well as enforcement of restrictive covenants. So, regardless of whether there's PUD zoning or base zoning, those homeowners' associations or property owners' associations will still be in effect, still be able to regulate and enforce their restrictive covenants. enforce their restrictive covenants.
So, to follow up, though, for areas where there are no such HOAs and no covenants, and these are probably, as I described, not the more elegant neighborhoods, and I hate to say it that way, but they aren't. These are, these are workforce housing areas. These are places where people have retired or they've raised their family there and they're still there. So, I guess my example that I came up with this afternoon, thinking about an example, would be along, say, Mountain View Avenue, and there are a couple duplexes there on that north side, and it would be to the west of Lashley before you get to the railroad track. So, would that be an appropriate location then to locate a business? Because as I drive along there during the growing season, I notice older people out there, you know, trying to maintain their yards and stuff. So, would it be appropriate there, or would those areas be of limit?
So, as Aaron mentioned, we're looking at having location criteria associated with any type of small-scale business in a residential mixed or residential multifamily neighborhood. Obviously, that type of application would have to go through a neighborhood meeting process, go through a DRC review process, and ultimately come before the Commission to make a determination of whether or not the scale and location are appropriate for that type of business at that location.
I guess the reason why I continue to ask that question a little bit relates to the business that we ended up saying we didn't like there on Seventeenth Avenue that is actually zoned PUD, there's a dentist's office and a couple other offices. And then, you know, it was ultimately approved, but just that juxtaposition I would hate to have us have going on in the city of Longmont. That's my huge concern. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, that's why we, you know, we wanted to have the discussion with Planning Commission and City Council, come from a policy perspective of whether or not there was interest in considering, consistent with the Envision plan, smaller-scale, potentially smaller-scale commercial uses in appropriate locations in residential mixed neighborhood and residential multifamily neighborhoods. Based upon the feedback that we've gotten from the majority of the Commission and Council that they felt that it would be appropriate to consider on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, we want to take those concerns into, when we, if somebody were to come forward and propose such a use in a location in one of those residential districts, obviously, we want to take into consideration compatibility and appropriate scale and appropriate location for those instances. I don't think it's going to happen very often. I think it'll be pretty rarely that something like that is proposed, but again, consistent with Envision, we want to allow that opportunity where it might be appropriate.
Any further comments and suggestions for Aaron and Brian? Do you need anything else from us? Is there anything that you're looking for to take back with you?
No, we appreciate your, obviously, your feedback today, not only on the zoning map, but since September, when we were discussing, started off our discussion on the zoning districts and uses, all the feedback the Commission has, has provided over the time, as well as the City Council and the public through this process. We just wanted to come and check in with the Commission this evening, see if you had any additional thoughts or questions about the proposed zoning as we're moving forward towards a recommendation on the overall code update and the zoning map, but we certainly appreciate everybody's thoughts.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to getting a big fat packet for April 25, so, and plenty of time to read it. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to our final call. Public invited to be heard. We do have some members of the public here. If you'd like to come forward and speak about anything, we'd love to hear from you now. No? No takers? Okay, all right. We'll close the public invited to be heard. Items from the Commission. I actually have something. I went to RMLUI. Thank you very much, Joni, for making that possible. Thank you, Jane, for doing the tasks. And Commissioner Fleg also went. I learned a lot. I went to every single possible affordable housing talk that they had because I was really, I was realizing with a lot of discussion that's occurring lately about, about affordable housing within Longmont, there are ideas being floated that, that we could just, if we build enough stock, if we just build enough housing stock, problem solved. And what I learned at the conference from a lot of great presenters, even this one fellow from Idaho, and Joni, I should send you his info. I don't know if you know Eric Kingston, I think was his name, but he had some really great resources compiled in like one sheet. So, you can't build your way out of the problem. And so, Councilmember Rodriguez, if you could take that along with you back to council. Building more stock, sure, it helps loosen up the market, and it's one of a myriad number of tools to help create enough housing for everyone. So, well worth going to that. They should also, I believe it'll be available to everybody, I'm not sure, if all of the presentations will be up on their website. So, if you have any interests, go for that. Commissioner Fleg, did you have something to add?
I did, and in my fantasy of finding workforce housing, and I like to call it workforce because I think that really is more precise, that's what we're trying to get people to understand, is that these are not Section 8 people. These are people that we see every day in professional positions that simply don't have a place to live in Longmont. And so, as I say, my fantasy is to take all the underutilized old shopping centers and declare eminent domain and take them over, and then get a developer who'll come in to build, but we own the land, and, well, I haven't figured out all the details. You know, fantasies are like that. But I did go to a really good section, and a session, rather, on what to do about these shopping centers, and they have, in many different states, revitalized them, and I had, I sat through an excellent presentation, and one of the people was Caroline White, who is the attorney, I think, for the St. Verne work. And so, I said, gee, would you ever think of making a presentation to more than just here? And she said, yes. So, my thought was, and she said she'd do it for free, my thought was perhaps this is something that we could look into as something for us, for council, for a variety of people, because the ideas that they had are not outlandish, and perhaps it's something that we should look at as being a part of a possible toolbox, because we have K-Marts, for example, and there it sits. And we did have Walmart that finally took down the old building, or somebody did. I'm not privy to all that information, but buildings like that tend to be built for a specific purpose, and when that purpose no longer wants to use the building, what do you do? So, that was just an idea, and thank you very much for sending me, and Jane for figuring out all the logistics. They were wonderful about finding me parking so I didn't have to wreck my knees going back and forth all over. They were really helpful. They do a good job. They really, really do. So, I feel honored to be able to go. But again, I've got her, but you've made half her information already, and I've known Caroline for, oh my gosh, a very long time, I think probably 20 years now. We worked on various projects, and she'd be an excellent speaker.
And Commissioner Fleg just reminded me, another thing that I heard about were land trusts and cooperative land trusts. And again, I haven't been able to figure this out. I haven't emailed you this yet, Joni, but, but I've been bouncing around this idea that since demographically, Aaron, right, you know, demographics, that we're seeing more and more childless couples. Well, you can't take it with you, right? So, when they pass away, they don't have any, anybody to leave their houses to, so why not leave them to the city? Everybody in TV land, get that? So, you know, but, but you could perhaps create a discontiguous land trust with individual properties that have been deeded permanently for perpetual affordability, something like that. But there has to be something in it for the person giving it up, and I haven't figured out the incentive yet. Okay. All right. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Items from Council Representative Rodriguez.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank all of you guys, and especially the staff and commissioners, for your service to the city and for your hard work. I know this comes before council again, but as somebody, as a real estate appraiser who deals with zoning through multiple municipalities, I think you're on the right track and doing a great job. Commissioners, you volunteer to do this, and I'm so thankful for that as a previous commissioner, and also as somebody who went to the Land Use Institute previously. It is amazing resource, in my opinion, and so, I'm very happy that you guys went. And while I can't speak for my fellow colleagues on this issue, my personal opinion is that there's no silver bullet, no golden arrow to solve that issue, and it has to be more holistic. And so, I do want to continue, as we go forward at the city level, to have a conversation about flexibility, as well as multiple strategies concerning affordable and workforce housing, because they are two separate concepts to me as well, one being subsidized, one being actually a different version of market-rate housing. And so, that's one thing that the council is very interested in, in working hard at trying to figure out the best path forward for the city at this time. So, thank you very much for your, your attendance to the Land Use Institute, and we are, we'd be very happy to receive your, what you learned as far as, you know, comments and, and what you've learned especially, because there are a number of council members who are not so sophisticated or privy to land usage concepts and planning and development concepts. And so, this would help fellow colleagues at the council shape their opinions as we go forward in these conversations. So, I would suggest that you please forward us this information as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Items from Director of Planning and Development Services, Jenny Marsh.
Commissioner, so I'm glad you enjoyed the training. For those of you who didn't make it to Rocky Mountain, the transportation symposium is next Friday, and I believe we've, I've plugged that a couple times. I don't think it's too late to register at the higher price, which is fine, and I think someone on staff might have bailed out, so we may have an extra spot sitting. So, if you feel like you could spare your Saturday, it's downtown across from the convention center. Again, another good blush at Friday, what did I say? Oh, yeah, nobody's going anywhere Saturday, except for a place they want to go, and it's also opening day, so you have to keep that in mind, that downtown gets a little hectic, but could be funner that way. So, if you, if you decide that that's something you want to do, let Jane or Phil know, and we'll figure out if, A, we have an open spot, but if not, it's not too late to do that.
Great. If there's no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.